Order, it's now 6:00 PM. Please and thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna want to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM, please. Thank you. All right, so first off, we will have a land acknowledgement tonight, and I will ask councillor Norton to please read that for us.
Thank you, your worship. The land on which the city of St. John or Meniscus is situated is the traditional territory of the Wollista Week. The Wollista Week, along with their indigenous neighbours, the Mi'kmaq and Pesakamadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. And as our practice is, we'll pause after reading that land acknowledgement.
Okay, can I ask everyone to stand for our anthem, please?
Good evening, your worship, members of council. I'm delighted this evening to introduce Jerry Zhao. Jerry is a 12-year-old Grade VII student at Rossay Netherwood School. He moved here with his family, Jack and Lucy, two years ago from China, and he is a student of the Greater St. John Chinese Cultural Association's music program, which is funded through the St. John Community Arts Board, and he's here to perform "Oh, Canada" on the saxophone.
It's been a bit of a wonderful journey for us to experience Oh, Canada so different every week. Thanks to your family as well for coming along. Thanks, Kate. Okay, common clerk, first item, please. Next item.
Your worship, first item on the agenda is 2.1, and this is approval of minutes of July the 26th.
Moved by the deputy and seconded by councillor Redwan. All in the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Next item.
Next item, your worship, approval of agenda, and there are a few additions. The first addition would be 17.1, Committee of the Whole recommendation with respect to vaccine policy. Next is 17.2, this is a settlement agreement with respect to 21 Lower Cove Loop property. And 17.3, approval of strategy course for council members.
Okay, can I have approval for the... Deputy and councillor Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item is disclosures of conflict of interest.
Okay, next item, please. No conflict of interest. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Next, we have the consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. I would move 5.1 to 5.7 inclusive, and I have a comment of 5.6.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by councillor Hickey. Okay, deputy, you had a comment on one of those items?
Yes, on 5.6, there's a cost breakdown to this, and I just want to clarify because we're spending $425,000, but only half of that is actually city money. We've gotten some grants, which I think, you know, is a great way to do business at $0.50, so I just wanted to recognise the provincial and federal parts of that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy, councillor Redwan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Rudin. I just wanted to speak to a couple of things as well. 5.6, actually, I wanted to mention that as well. I noticed every time I see, well, not every time, but almost every time I see Mr Samir Amin's name on a file, there seems to be a huge savings component to it. And I also wanted to just speak quickly to 5.7, and encourage any members of the public to go through and read this. This is really a great thing. It's called Bang the Table Software, and it's something that's going to be interactive on our website. We'll be able to get some input, and staff are going to be trained on it. If you look and see which cities are using this, there's some extremely progressive cities that's doing it, and that's all that I have.
Thank you, councillor. Over to you, councillor Harris.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick question on 5.1, and I'm sure it's just something I'm missing, but on the Crane Mountain enhancement, I see that the KBM is provided with that $5,000 piece of the deal with Crane Mountain. It was my understanding that Martinon was eligible for some of that, the Martinon Community Centre, but maybe I'm missing something there. I was just looking for clarification as why Martinon Community Centre wasn't included in that, or if it was in the past and has been recently removed. I'm just, I'm not understanding why it's not there and why KBM is.
Thank you. Mr Reed, are you up for that?
Caught him off guard.
Your worship, through the councillor, if I understand you correctly, there was a deal brokered between the FRSC if the development went forward. The purpose of the report was to highlight that the clay extraction project has been abandoned, so really the intention of the report was just to provide an overview of where we're currently at with that in terms of if someone wanted to restart, submit a new application.
So they wouldn't be in, if there was a new application that fell under this, the Martinon Community Centre wouldn't be in there?
Through your worship, I believe there would be a new deal brokered with, you know, whatever proposal would come forward in that case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Reed. All right, I will call the question then. All in favor? Contrary-minded, motion carried. Next item, common clerk.
Next, we have members' comments.
All right, over to you, deputy mayor McKenzie.
Thank you, your worship. This Friday is National Suicide Prevention Day, and in the north end in Cusman Valley, there will be a ceremony at 11:00 AM, 500 Somerset Street. There's a new development down there, development not in terms of buildings, but it's a wall that was actually part of the rifle range, has been refurbished, and there's going to be a celebration down there. It's called the Giant Steps Wellness Park. I don't know if any of you have seen it driving by, but Gary Brown has launched this. He's spent a lot of time and effort in it. They're selling t-shirts, "I am all ears, reach out," to bring awareness to suicide prevention and mental illness, and so I would encourage anybody that can go down on Friday, that would be a good place to spend a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. Thank you for that reminder. Councillor Redwan.
Thank you, Mayor Rudin. I'd first like to express my deepest sympathies to the family, friends, and members of City Hall on the passing of Mr, previous councillor Albert Vincent, who served the city almost over 20 years in office. I do have a couple of things that I do want to mention, too, that we do have, the St. John Arts Board is actually going to be putting on CultureScape, and that's going to be going from September 24th to the 26th, so take a look at their Facebook page, and you're going to get to enjoy some of their artists, musicians, and performers around the city. Councillor Stewart and I are actually preparing to get ready to do a Glen Falls cleanup, so we're looking for anybody that would like to go out and enjoy cleaning up Glen Falls. The community is fantastic over there. We will be announcing a little bit more detail about it later on. And I wanted to mention my hidden heroes feature this week is actually pals, and I'd just like to thank the team for meeting with me online to discuss the pals organization, which was founded 21 years ago by J.K. Irving, and they actually involve 22 schools now. I'll be honest, I always thought that this was something that they just collected school supplies for the kids and teens, but they actually have program enrichment classes, they actually have a bus where they take kids out, and they actually have a program which any entrepreneur, small or large, can get involved in, and they, you know, they actually, they do so much in the community, you know, I thank them so much. They do have breakfast programs, after-school programs, and, you know, certainly take a look at their Facebook page if you'd like to help out.
Thank you, councillor Redwan. Councillor Sullivan.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, just a shout-out to everybody involved in the school system, teachers, educational staff, students. First day of school today. I know a lot of students I met are now tired, worn out, and their heads are still spinning from day one. So thanks to everybody involved, and you'll get through this. Following up on that, just be aware and be patient on the roads. Lots of kids out, the school buses are out, so be kind, be patient. I know this morning there were a few accidents on a few major routes into the city, and take your time, leave lots of space, so just keep your eyes out for the kiddos on the streets. Same time, we've got a change of season that we haven't seen in a couple of years, where we only went to green in the middle of the summer, we're into fall sports. So for all those volunteer coaches out there in the city of St. John, thank you for giving your time. For all of those young people who've decided maybe playing the sports is not for them, but refereeing and being an official is for them, thank you very much. For those of you who are going to be spectators, maybe for the first time in a couple of years, be patient, be kind. They're volunteer coaches, they're young people as officials, and if they're not there, your children don't get to enjoy their sport, so please be respectful of all of them, and thank you very much for everybody who's giving your time. And finally, just a reminder, we're in green phase, but it's still a green phase of COVID-19. If you haven't had an opportunity to get your vaccine yet, you can get a free ride on the St. John Transit bus to get there. We're happy to do that for you. I am sure there are folks who will help you out. The people at Public Health will be very happy to steer you in the right direction. And for those of us who already have both of our vaccines, we can still be carriers. Please wear your mask if you can socially distance. Please make sure, you know, amazingly enough, my mother told me to wash my hands, and please don't sneeze and wipe it on things. And she was right. Remember, it's not just COVID, there are fewer people getting colds, getting flus, getting sick. We wear our masks, sneeze into our elbows, and wash our hands. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sullivan, for those great reminders. Councillor Hickey.
Thank you, your worship. Certainly echoing councillor Sullivan's point, welcome back to school. To everyone who went back to school today, I like to see them wearing my alma mater's mask in St. John High, he works in administration there. Wanted to also give a shout-out to the organisers of the Moonlight Bazaar, an event that went off very well, lots of people out, good COVID-19 protocols in place, it seems like everything went according to plan, and it was amazing to really see the community come together again after a long year and a bit. I also wanted to offer my condolences to the family of Albert Vincent. Albert served on, around this horseshoe for 24 years, and certainly remained in fame as known as the watchdog of council, so I wanted to offer my condolences and I'm sure echoed around the horseshoe as well. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Hickey. I will also send my congratulations out to all the kids who are off to school today. It's probably a pretty exciting time, I would think, considering the ups and downs of the last year of going to school and getting to see your friends, et cetera, so I will echo to be careful as drivers. Like I say, it's an exciting time. And I'll also send along my condolences to Albert Vincent's family. He did sit on council for 20, 24 years. He was 94 years old. He ran for a seat in Ward III with me in 2016, I believe it was, and he was a cute old guy. I mean, you know, he had a very old style of campaigning, the fire and brimstone, and, you know, he was right outside the door shaking hands as people were going in, and so he was cute anyway, so I send along my condolences to the family as well.
All right, next item. Common clerk, please.
Your worship, next item is the public hearing, which is scheduled for 6:30, so I would suggest we move on to consideration of bylaws for third readings under item 10 on the agenda.
Okay, so 10.1. Ms Hamilton, are you going to give us a brief? Thank you very much.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. I just wanted to make a note before I just introduced the two third reading items of a process improvement that we implemented as part of the planning applications. You will note that there are covering memo that has been prepared with the support of General Council Office that will provide clarity on the motions that are before you for both third reading and first and second reading for the public hearing application, so I did want to highlight that process improvement for you. So moving on to the third reading item for item 10.1, before you for third reading is an application for municipal plan and zoning bylaw amendment with Section 59 conditions to permit construction of a new office, maintenance building, and outdoor storage area for a subject property located at 695 Somerset Street. Following the public hearing, council gave first and second reading on August 23rd, and the application is before you this evening for approval of third reading and for approval of the Section 59 conditions. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Common clerk.
Your worship, yes, so this would require five motions in total. The first two motions would be to give the municipal plan a reading in its entirety and then by title, and next would be a zoning bylaw approval for reading in entirety, Section 59 approval, and then a reading by title.
Okay, so for third reading by entirety for the municipal plan, can I get a mover on that? Councillor Lowe, councillor Redwan, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
And this is titled "A Law to Amend the Municipal Plan Bylaw." The municipal plan bylaw the city of St. John enacted on the 30th day of January 2012 is amended by: 1) Amending Schedule A: City Structure by Redesigning a parcel of land having an area of 3,445 square meters located adjacent to 695 Somerset Street, also identified as PID number 00415497 and PID number 55147557 from local centre to stable area classification; and 2) Amending Schedule B: Future Land Use by Redesigning a parcel of land having an area of 3,445 square meters located adjacent to 695 Somerset Street, also identified as PID number 00415497 and PID number 55147557 from local centre to stable commercial classification.
Thank you, common clerk. So I need a motion for third reading by title for a municipal plan. Councillor Hickey and deputy, on the question? All in favor? Contrary-minded, motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
Okay, I need a motion for third reading by entirety for zoning. Deputy and councillor Killen, on the question? All in favor? Contrary-minded, motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by rezoning land having an area of 3,445 square meters located adjacent to 695 Somerset Street, also identified as PID number 00415497 and 55147557 from general commercial to special zone number four pursuant to a resolution adopted by common council under Section 59 of the Community Planning Act.
Okay. So I need a motion for Section 59 conditions. Councillor Sullivan and councillor Lowe, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
And the final is for a resolution to move this by title.
Councillor Sullivan and deputy, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw the city of St. John.
Okay, next item.
Next item is a zoning bylaw amendment in Section 131 Agreement for 91 King Street. Commissioner Hamilton will provide a brief overview.
Over to you, Commissioner Hamilton.
Yes, good evening, your worship, members of council. Before you for third reading is an application to amend Schedule G of the zoning bylaw to allow a maximum height of 55 meters for a mixed-use development project on subject properties at 85 to 87 and 91 King Street. Council will also consider public benefits being presented for this project, which will be included in a Section 131 agreement. Following the public hearing, council gave first and second reading on August 23rd, and the application is before you for third reading and for approval of the Section 131 agreement. Thanks, your worship.
Okay, move third reading by entirety? Deputy? Councillor Lowe, on the question? All in favor? Contrary-minded, motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule G, the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John, by increasing the maximum building height of PID number 00037093 and 00039982 from 28 to 42 meters, from 28 and 42 meters to 55 meters.
Thank you. Okay, I need a third reading by title. Councillor Redwan? Councillor Stewart? On the question? All in favor? Contrary-minded, thank you. Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
And I need a motion for Section 131 approval. Councillor Harris and councillor Hickey, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. All right, next item.
Your worship, maybe I would suggest we could deal with the items coming from Committee of the Whole?
17.
Okay. So the first one that was a motion that came from Committee of the Whole is item 17.1, and that is with respect to a vaccine policy, and I have the wording if you wish me to read that out?
Yeah, if you don't, you might as well.
So the resolution reads, "City of St. John adopt a vaccine test policy which stipulates that employees and members of council who attend the workplace will either show proof of full vaccination or wear masks and undergo COVID-19 testing. Number two, city manager determine in which circumstances members of the public who access city-owned buildings will be required to voluntarily show proof of vaccination or wear masks. Three, city manager be instructed to develop the vaccine or test policy. Four, city manager be authorized to amend the policy as appropriate as COVID-19 circumstances evolve. And five, city manager implement the vaccine or test policy by September 2021."
Okay. Thank you, councillor Sullivan and councillor Hickey. On the question? All in favor? Oh, hold on. Oh, sorry, didn't look at my, councillor Redwan, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Rudin. I just wanted to make a comment about this one. I'm not going to be voting in favour of this motion, and the reason why is because I do feel that it is the responsibility of council to be putting motions forth and to, for policies becoming, policies forth, rather, and for them to be coming back when they're amended to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Redwan. I'll call the question then. All in favor? Contrary-minded. Councillor Redwan, motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, your worship, came from Committee of the Whole. It would be item 17.2, and it's with respect to a settlement at 21 Lower Cove Loop, and the resolution would read that the city of St. John authorize settlement of claim between city and Kavanaugh Homes Inc. involving the installation of metal cladding on building located at 21 Lower Cove Loop in the amount of $40,000 plus HST payable to Mr. Kavanaugh in return for full and final release, and that mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the necessary documents to effect the settlement.
Thank you. Need a motion, councillor Lowe. Councillor Killen, on the question? All in favor? Contrary-minded, motion carried. Contrary-minded? Councillor Hickey? Okay. Oh, and councillor Sullivan? Sorry, councillor Sullivan. All right, motion carried. Thank you very much. All right.
And the final item that came from Committee of the Whole is with respect to authorization of a strategy course for elected officials. It would be that council authorize the expenditure of $299, $299 per council member for their attendance at a strategy course for elected officials offered by FEO Strategy Management.
Councillor Harris? Okay. Seconder, councillor Killen, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. All right, next item.
Your worship, so there's only four minutes to the public hearing.
All right.
I think if the city manager's in agreement, we could look at item 15.
15, okay.
Okay, so 15.1, your worship, is four responses that the city received to its position paper, and those have been submitted and added to your agenda. The recommendation is to receive and file this information.
Your worship and members of council, just by way of background and for the benefit of those listening in this evening, as you will recall, we put forward a question position paper to people running in the next federal election, and we asked that they provide input to our questions from that paper in time for this council session. The good news is that all four of the major parties, their representatives have provided responses. They are in the kit, and we simply highlighted this evening with my verbal introduction to make sure that the public is aware that those responses are part of the kit and serve to help inform the electorate prior to the federal election. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. I'll also say briefly that I'd like to thank the four, our four representatives, potential representatives who did respond. Their responses are excellent. I would encourage the public to take a look at those responses, you know, for to help you make a decision going forward. So we got a response from Wayne Long, the Liberal candidate, Mel Norton, the Progressive Conservative candidate, and McAllister from the Green Party, and Don Pollan from the NDP Party. So like I said, all excellent responses, and thanks to everyone. So can I get a motion to receive and file? Oh, sorry, I've got a couple of questions, actually. Well, I'll take a motion to receive and file. Did you, okay, for deputy and councillor Sullivan, and on the question, councillor Harris.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things, your worship. One, there is a correction there to make. Mr Norton is a candidate for the Conservative Party of Canada, not the Progressive Conservative Party of Canada. Just something for the package, because that party would have dissolved many years ago. But, and the other part is, I would, I'm just wondering, city manager, if it's possible for us to push these response letters out beyond the packet, maybe through our communications, maybe through Twitter, social media? Just wondering if that's a possibility to better engage the public and help them make an informed choice.
Your worship, through you to the councillor, we can make arrangements to post them on our website. Of course, with the limitations on other social media forums, we can't put them there. Of course, with the limitations on other social media forums, we can't put them there other than the announcement that they reside on our website, but we will make... we will have them reside on our website.
Thank you. Counselor Redwan?
Thank you, Mayor Rudin. I just wanted to really say as well, thank you to Wayne Long, Mel Norton, Anne McAllister, and Don Pollan for giving your insight, and I'd just like to say, of course, as your representative, it's very important to stay impartial, and I wish you all best of luck with your campaign, and I look forward to working with whoever gets in.
Thank you, Counselor Redwan. All right, on the question? I've called the question. Okay, on the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. All right. Common clerk?
Yeah, so it's now 6:30, your worship. Our timing is perfect. The public hearings have been advertised, and the first item on the public hearing is item 9.1 on your agenda. This is for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with Planning Advisory Committee report for 1720 Manawaginish Road, and Commissioner Hamilton will provide the introduction.
Commissioner Hamilton, over to you, please.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. Before you this evening for public hearing is a rezoning application for 1720 Manawaginish Road. The purpose of the application is to rezone the property from two-unit residential to general commercial and to recognize a longstanding non-conforming commercial use of the Island View Motel. The application, I can confirm, has followed all legislative requirements and received recommendations of approval from both staff and the Planning Advisory Committee with recommended section 59 conditions. As both recommendations are aligned, no supplementary report is included this evening. And with that as an introduction, I will turn things over to Mr. Andrew Reed for a brief staff presentation on the file.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. I'll try to be brief here tonight. The application is to rezone property at 1720 Manawaginish Road from two-unit residential to general commercial to legally permit, under the zoning bylaw, an existing nonconforming accommodation use. The subject property is located along the north side of Manawaginish Road, backing on at the Island View Heights neighborhood. The property appears to have been used as a 14-room motel going back to at least 1967. The current property owner has continuously operated the motel for the past 30 years, and the property appears capable of meeting the definition of a nonconforming use. The applicant has requested the rezoning to permit the use for greater certainty. The former motel office was recently demolished, and a new dwelling was constructed and subdivided out from the property pictured here in 2020. There are several commercially zoned properties in the neighborhood, including a garden center and produce stand located next door. The subject property is also located opposite the undeveloped right-of-way, Llewellyn Avenue. The surrounding area is a mix of residential, commercial, and institutionally zoned properties. Schedule B of the municipal plan designates the property as stable residential. These areas are intended to evolve over time, but new and redeveloped land uses should reinforce the predominant community character and make a positive contribution to the neighborhood. Policy LU88 sets forward six criteria for the assessment of rezoning applications in stable residential areas. These are summarized here. In terms of the contribution, in rezoning an existing legal nonconforming use, the proposal will not cause significant impact to the neighborhood. In terms of compatibility, there are many examples of similar accommodation uses located along Manawaginish Road. In addition, there are several other commercial uses, such as personal service, pharmacy, medical clinic, and restaurant located in the neighborhood. In terms of services, the subject property is connected to city water and sewer and is located 200 meters from the nearest transit stop. In terms of the site and building design features, no changes are being proposed for the property. Should substantial changes be proposed, they would be subject to conformity with the general commercial zone standards and applicable National Building Code requirements. Staff do propose several conditions, section 59 conditions attached to the rezoning. Among these are prohibiting vehicular access onto the undeveloped right-of-way, Llewellyn Avenue. This condition will ensure that future owners understand that the city is not interested in providing servicing or maintenance of the undeveloped right-of-way, and that all access is to be off Manawaginish Road. If Llewellyn Avenue is to be used, it must be developed to city standard at the developer's expense. As well, staff recommend limiting the permitted uses to those identified in the recommendation to increase compatibility with any potential future redevelopment of the property. In terms of engagement, last month, letters were sent to all neighbors within 100 meters. The rezoning was advertised on the city website. We did receive one email requesting more information on the proposal. There were no members of the public in attendance at Planning Advisory Committee. The Planning Advisory Committee voted in favor of adopting staff's recommendation to approve the rezoning and impose the described conditions. That would conclude my presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, so I will ask tonight if there's anyone here in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the application? All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay. Anyone here who'd like to... I have to ask three times. Anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Okay. Oh, all right. Come on down. And if you don't mind giving us your name, please?
My name is Jatine Patel. My father is the owner of the property, and really, the information was all in the presentation, so I don't have anything to add. I think the reason they want to rezone is just because they want to sell it to another person.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing. Now, council, does anyone have any questions for staff, for Mr. Reed? All right. No questions for Mr. Reed? I am going to need two motions, one for first reading by title and the second one for... and a second reading by title. Counselor Hickey? Deputy? First reading by title? Okay, common clerk?
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Oh, sorry. I didn't vote. I gotta call the question. All in favor? Contrary minded?
Now go forward.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you. Okay, and I need a second reading by title. Counselor Sullivan? Counselor Redwan? On the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you very much. Okay, next item?
Your worship, next item under the public hearings is item 9.2 on your agenda, and this is a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with Planning Advisory Committee report for 867 Millich Avenue, and Commissioner Hamilton will provide a brief introduction.
Commissioner Hamilton, over to you, please.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Before you this evening for public hearing is a rezoning and subdivision application for 867 Millich Avenue. The purpose of the application is to rezone the property from one-to-two-unit residential to permit the development of an infill semi-detached dwelling. The application has followed all legislative requirements and has received recommendations of approval from both staff and the Planning Advisory Committee, and as both recommendations are aligned, no supplemental report is necessary. And with that as an introduction, I will turn things over to Mr. Andrew Reed to provide a brief staff presentation on the file.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reed?
The proposal before you tonight, mayor and members of council, is to rezone a portion of 867 Millich Avenue from one-unit residential to two-unit residential to permit an infill development. With the subdivision, a cash-in lieu of land for public purposes contribution is also required. The proposed lot 21-2 is located just north of 867 Millich Avenue and is approximately 603 square meters in area. Should the rezoning be successful, the applicant intends to construct a semi-detached dwelling. Semi-detached dwelling means a building containing two dwelling units arranged side-by-side and separated by a vertical common wall. The subject property as a whole is 1,495 square meters in area. It's located at the corner of Barber Place and Millich Avenue. There are two existing accesses to the property, as you can see pictured here. The surrounding neighborhood is predominantly serviced, one-unit dwellings located in the one-unit residential zone. There are many examples of other forms of housing nearby as well, such as semi-detached units, condominiums, and the most recently approved multi-unit at the corner of Daniel Avenue and Millich Avenue. According to schedule A of the zoning bylaw, the property is zoned one-unit residential, and according to schedule B of the municipal plan, the property is designated stable residential. Again, these are areas existing within serviced neighborhoods that may contain a variety of housing forms and densities and are intended to evolve over time. New and redeveloped land uses should reinforce the predominant community character and make a positive contribution. The rezoning was evaluated based on the criteria set forth in the municipal plan by policy LU88, and a full review is contained in the report. It's summarized here. I'd just add that the proposal is an appropriate and desirable infill development, much in line with the intent of the stable residential area. Semi-detached dwelling unit is compatible with the surrounding land uses and shouldn't compromise the neighborhood character. The proposal was reviewed by infrastructure development and can be supported. A six-meter easement on the front of the property will be required to provide St. John Water access to a municipal storm sewer that crosses the property. Overall, the proposal has efficient access to many city services, transit, and many of the nearby amenities that make Millichville desirable. In terms of site and building design, detailed drawings will be reviewed at the building permit stage. Both the new lot and remainder lot at 867 Millich Avenue are capable of meeting all lot standards of both the one-unit and two-unit residential zone, and no variances are required. Money in lieu of land for public purposes will be required at the time of subdivision as there is no need for land for pedestrian walkway with this application. In terms of engagement, letters were sent to property owners as per the PAC's Terms of Procedures, and the public notice for the rezoning was advertised on the city website. Three emails have been received from members of the public noting opposition to the proposal. There were no members of the public in attendance at PAC. To briefly summarize the concerns, they related to perceived inadequacy of the lot size and impact on the character of the neighborhood. When staff evaluate lot sizes, we look at our zone standards, so in this case, both lots are able to meet those zone standards. And in terms of the municipal plan, it is a plan that's supportive of infill housing, of providing additional housing, and in a way that gradually evolves neighborhoods, such as the proposal is demonstrating. The applicant has applied to rezone the property to two-unit residential with the intention of constructing a semi-detached dwelling as defined. In summary, PAC and staff's recommendation is to approve the rezoning and acceptance of money in lieu of land for public purposes. And that concludes my presentation again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, so I will ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the application? And once more, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the application? So is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak in favor of the application? Please come down and give us your name and address.
Good evening, your worship, councilors, staff, and members of the public. My name is Matt. I work at Hughes Surveys and Consultants, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Mr. Morad. I'd like to confirm that our client is in agreement with the recommendations provided to you by both city staff and the Planning Advisory Committee. City staff have done a pretty thorough job of their presentation and overview of the project, and I believe they covered all the bases, but I'm just going to reiterate what we presented to PAC. We believe this is an ideal opportunity for an infill development in this area. The location of the existing house on the property is key, as it does not require demolition to allow further development of the site. This allows the tax base to grow with no additional infrastructure or road maintenance being required. We did receive some letters of concern about the lot size and as well as perhaps a misunderstanding around the definition of a semi-detached dwelling. First, I believe staff presentation read it, but the definition under the zoning bylaw of a semi-detached dwelling means a building containing two dwelling units arranged side-by-side and separated vertically by a common wall that extends from the foundation to the roof but does not include a mobile home or mini-home. This application is for a one semi-detached dwelling proposed, and this consists of two dwelling units. As far as lot sizes are concerned, they're laid out by the city of St. John's zoning bylaw. In the case of the property in question, it is serviced by municipal infrastructure and is currently zoned as R1. The minimum lot size for the R1 zone is actually only 460 square meters. Due to these existing conditions and the examples of similar density and size lots, as well as numerous examples of R2 zoned properties throughout Millichville, we believe that the development will not be out of character with the surrounding properties. The proposal here tonight is meeting or exceeding minimum standards, and no variances required to accommodate the proposed infill development. Thank you for your consideration on this evening, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt? All right, looks like we're good. Matt, thank you. So I'll ask again if there's anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, I will close the public hearing then, and does anyone have any questions for Mr. Reed? Questions for staff? Okay, if no one has any questions, I am going to... Oh, oh, sorry. I'm not watching this. Deputy, sorry.
Andrew, was there only three letters, or am I missing something here? Because I just heard twice that there was a lot of complaints about it being out of character for that area, but are we talking three letters against us?
Through your worship to the council, there were indeed three letter... four letters, but we would count them as three, as two were from the same sender.
Okay. But that's the only opposition we had to it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I will need a motion for first reading by title, and I would need a motion for second reading by title, so...
Move first by title.
Okay. Counselor Hickey and Counselor Harris, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Second reading by title? Counselor Redwan? Counselor Killen? On the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Matt. Next item?
The final item for the public hearings is 9.3 on your agenda, and this is for a proposed municipal plan and zoning bylaw amendment with a PAC report for 60 Technology Drive, and again, Commissioner Hamilton will give a brief overview.
Commissioner Hamilton, over to you, please.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Before you this evening for public hearing is a municipal plan and zoning bylaw amendment application with section 59 conditions for lands located at 60 Technology Drive. application with Section 59 conditions for lands located at 60 Technology Drive. The purpose of this application is to redesignate and rezone lands for high-density residential development, which consists of up to 500 units in six buildings. The application has followed all legislative requirements and received recommendations of approval from both staff and the Planning Advisory Committee, and both of these recommendations are aligned, and no supplemental report was necessary for this file. And with that as an introduction, I will turn things over to Mr. Mark Reed for a brief presentation on behalf of staff.
Over to you, Mr. Reed, please.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Good evening, your worship and council. This application deals with a proposed residential development on Technology Drive. The applicant is proposing approximately 500 dwelling units in five to six buildings. It requires a municipal plan amendment, a rezoning, as well as subdivision and money in lieu of LPP. The proposed layout is on the screen. The applicant has come up with a layout that incorporates five buildings. There could be a sixth building on the lot next to the Xerox building, given some site reconfiguration. The first phase of the development is at the Technology Drive-Sussex Drive intersection with a 75-unit building planned for construction either this fall or this spring, depending on design and weather. Some renderings of the building, they're generally five to six stories, mix of materials, they incorporate balconies, they're a very modern-looking building. The applicant's site design has the buildings placed along the edge of the plateau to take advantage of the views from the city that are offered by this location. The site and neighborhood, it's generally an undeveloped site in the Somerset Business Park. The only development that has occurred there since the establishment of the business park was the Xerox building in 1999 and 2000. There is a area, a treat area right at the intersection of Sussex Drive and Technology Drive that provides a developer with the opportunity for some tree retention. The remainder of the site has generally been cleared with some successional growth that has occurred since the actual site work was developed in the early 2000s. The municipal plan designation for the site is currently business center, stable residential, and local center. Since the establishment of the business park, there's been limited uptake. What has really occurred is that a lot of the technology firms have shifted their locational requirements to go to central business districts, such as our uptown, as well as other centers close to universities, such as the UNB, St. John Regional Hospital Primary Center that we've established in the municipal plan. So staffer of the opinion that changing the focus of this area from commercial to residential should not hamper the city's ability to attract future commercial development. It really serves as an expansion of the Crescent Valley Intensification Area. It's a service site. It's proximate to a commercial area. We've got the Superstore, which is long established. We've had some recent investment in that area with the Zesty Lemon, the Dollarama, NB Liquor, as well as it's proximate to the Lansdowne Commercial Area as well. The site is serviced in conjunction with the business park established in 2000, and as well, there's topographic separation between the lower-density land uses along Rope Walk and Milletge Avenue. The zoning of the site is currently business park commercial. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site to high-rise residential. With the exception of the front yard setback, which staff are supportive of variance for, the proposal meets the standards of the RH Zone. Staff are recommending some Section 59 conditions, one of which is enhanced front yard landscaping to help buffer the views of the parking area. Should there be over 500 units proposed, we're recommending a servicing assessment, just to ensure that we have downstream capacity. Consistent with any other rezoning, we're recommending detailed site and building plans to demonstrate conformity with the proposal that's been presented to the public and council. We're also recommending conditions related to vehicular and traffic circulation, one of which is a traffic impact study that would look at the Somerset Technology Drive intersection, as well as the potential for cut-through traffic on Sussex Drive. We're also recommending an extension of the sidewalk around the cul-de-sac bulb to provide some increased pedestrian connectivity for the area, and we're also recommending that any infrastructure improvements be the developer's responsibility. The project will require money in lieu of land for public purposes in conjunction with the subdivision, so we're recommending that council assent to that. In terms of community engagement, we sent letters out to landowners within 100 meters of the site and advertised the public hearing on the city's website. As of August 30th, we received six emails from the public, and one from Envision St. John, and we had one appearance at the PAC meeting in favor of the proposal. The developer also in August held a public open house at the RKYC. It was attended by 12 area residents. The residents generally had questions around the construction schedule and timeline and the methods for rock excavation. There were also some questions raised with respect to traffic, green space within the development, and how stormwater would be managed. Staff are recommending that the municipal plan amendment be approved, along with the rezoning, and the recommended Section 59 conditions as outlined in the report and recommendation letter. With respect to the subdivision, we're recommending the assent to money in lieu of land for public purposes and any necessary local government services easement. And the PAC recommendation was consistent with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, so I'm going to ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? And for the final time, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Please come down and give us your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, your worship, members of council, staff. My name is Melanie Dowd Martel. I'm here representing Somerset Investments, the developer and the owner of the property, as is my colleague Mark Hovey. I think Mr. Reed has done an excellent job of laying out all the details. We just wanted to let you know that we're here to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Thank you so much. Anyone have any questions for Melanie Dow? Okay, hold on, we do have a couple of questions for you. Counselor Harris, you're up.
You, your worship, and thank you for coming to meet with us tonight. The business plan, who's the target market for these units? I get a few questions, but I'll just keep...
Yeah, sure. Well, one of the things we noticed, of course, in researching what we were going to do with the property was that there seems to be a really high demand in that particular area for those looking to downsize. So first target market would absolutely be older, probably retired, looking to sell their homes and move into something more manageable. Also, young professionals as well would suit because of the proximity to the hospital, which is obviously one of our largest employers in New Brunswick, and the university and those things. So really, I mean, it's really open to anyone, but that's, I think, what we're going to attract.
So is your price point for units, is that... I mean, obviously, that's going to be contingent on a number of things, but what is the target for that price point per unit? It sounds to me like you're looking for somebody who's in that plus $65,000 a year category. So I'm just wondering if you see that to be like a $1,500-plus a month unit to 2,000, or if you see it to being under that?
I think it's going to be target market rent at this point. It's kind of early to say we don't have our construction budgets or anything like that completed. Again, everything hinging on the ability to rezone and go forward. I think Jeff Seer could probably answer a little bit more of that question when he comes to speak. He's... We've been taking a lot of direction from Envision St. John based on the data that they have and what is in demand.
Sure, okay. I'll save the rest of my questions for him, but thank you so much for making yourself available.
You're welcome. Thank you. Deputy?
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Melanie. So you had an open house, you had 12 people come in. I noticed that there was six emails from the public. I'm assuming that they're in opposition, but if you had 12 people come in and six letters up, that tell me that the other six thought, after looking at it, that it was a good idea? Or did you get a good response from them, I guess is a better way?
Definitely, we're able to satisfy their concerns. So like Mr. Reed had noted, a lot of the concerns were around construction timelines, just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to go on forever, and so we, you know, just essentially outlined our schedule to them. Some were concerned about blasting. There is no blasting required. Site's cleared and ready. Some were concerned about stormwater management, which actually ended up being an issue unrelated to the project. It's a current issue that staff have taken back and are going to address with the public.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Redwan?
Thank you, Mayor Reed, and through you to Mrs. Dowd Martel. First of all, thank you so much for your continued investment in the city, and I just actually, Counselor Harris kind of touched base on what I wanted to talk about, but I did want to ask you, if you have any idea roughly how many units might be wheelchair-accessible or if you end up having like elevators in the building? I know you don't have everything finalized yet, but I just thought I'd ask.
I definitely don't have anything finalized. We don't have the suite layout completed. At this stage, we have the general footprint and haven't gotten into suite makeup as of yet. Again, we're taking advice from outside consultants on, again, what is in demand and what is required. There will... We do know that there will be two elevators in the building, and we do obviously plan to have wheelchair-accessible units.
That's great. Some of the continuous feedback that I seem to get, just for your information, is that a lot of the time, the wheelchair-accessible units are on the ground floor, and people are wanting them higher up, so just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Ogden?
Just wanted to thank Melanie for coming in. I think it's great that we have new homes and new apartments in the North End. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Law?
You've seen all the conditions of the PAC and the 50... Section 59, do you agree with all them?
We do.
Good, thank you.
It's easy. All right, I guess that's it. Thank you very much. I've had the opportunity to be up there, as you well know, and it's an amazing piece of property.
Now, we're very excited.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll ask again, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Mr. Seer, come on down, as Bob Barker says.
Thank you, worship. I'm Jeff Seer, Director of Strategic Projects in Real Estate with Envision St. John, through you to the council. We're excited to be here to speak in support of this great proposal to re-envision at Technology Drive. It's one that we've been involved in, but also a number of our precedent, predecessor organizations have, with developing St. John, working with the Dows and the Hovys with regards to trying to create a new vision, and previously enterprising St. John in pursuing the business park vision for the site. From that, they were able to secure Xerox, which brought hundreds of jobs to the community and significant tax base that really provided a strong return for the city's contributions and investment in the road with the Dows collaboratively. But beginning in 2019, we were looking at what's changed and why that development was building out, and so we started working with Melanie and her team with regards to, you know, what might be some of the market drivers that could help get that site up and moving. And really, the solution and the great opportunity was residential. So we've worked with them, they've provided us their plans, and we've kind of done some economic and community benefit analysis for this council. So with regards to kind of some of the key benefits we see coming from this project, on a per-phase basis, we've estimated internally roughly about $15 million in GDP generated, about $12.5 million of labor income, and 255 jobs through the construction process throughout the supply chain in New Brunswick, much of which would occur in St. John, spread over likely about a year and a half to two years. The fiscal impact, we anticipate somewhere in the magnitude of $150,000 to $250,000 in property tax revenue per phase, depending on the size of each phase, and that's before additional revenues such as water utility, as well as St. John Energy. And again, you know, right now, there's such a strong demand for housing. Any new development that brings new housing, whether market or whether it affordable, helps to ease the pressure on existing dwellings that are already occupied, and it helps to ensure that when people downsize to new units, they're downsizing into empty ones and not the ones with tenants in them. So again, these projects are quite beneficial for the community. And, you know, just to conclude, this really is an exciting opportunity to re-envision this space. There may still be some opportunities for... There may still be some opportunities for commercial on the ground floor. It's something that we've discussed with the developer and the city, and could have subsequent applications, should there be a market opportunity for mixed use, but that's still being looked into. Overall, it's a project that has a great quality of design, is in a great strategic area, and provides strong community benefit. I can take some questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Seer. Any questions for Mr. Seer? Counselor Harris?
I knew it was coming. Thank you, your worship. Thanks, Jeff, and just want to stress, I can certainly buy into the excitement behind it. I think it's important to note, there's a lot of people asking questions in the city around who are we building for, and what is this council doing to pave the way and make it easy for development to occur that is at a price point that's under $1,500 a month? And so that's why I wanted to ask those questions. It wasn't to try to detract from the positivity that this development will bring overall, because I believe that firmly, but I guess my question to you, Mr. Seer, is when you're looking at these developments, when Envision is getting itself involved, and I understand some of this is coming from before Envision, what does that lens look like for trying to also reach across the aisle and reach across to developers to build in places where we need them? Now, I understand we don't have the affordable housing plan done yet, so we haven't identified those areas where we need that density and we need the affordable units built, but how would you see your role, and I know we're talking about this specific development, but a developer comes to you, what are there any levers that Envision have or you would have to steer this in a direction, whether it be a type of construction, type of unit, incentives to try to get that price point to a more mixed neighborhood reality? Because I'm looking at this, and I understand there's going to be units that become empty because people move in here. There's also just pent-up demand, people may gobble these up who are from out of town. And so I'm just trying to... I'm trying to understand how you view it from an organizational standpoint, and if there's any levers that are there that we can pull on to try to pave the way for more affordable units when these opportunities present themselves.
Mr. Seer, I'll get you to give us a quick synopsis, maybe. It's owed a scope, really, for this...
Sure.
For this, for this application, but if you don't mind giving us a brief, very brief answer.
Thank you, worship, through you to the counselor. With regards to what levers we pull, there are a number of programs through the province, through CMHC. They often have specific times for approvals and dispersments, and sometimes they don't line up. So we try and ensure that all developers that we work with are aware of those programs, what some of their benefits are, and how you can stack different ones to try and make the numbers work. It doesn't always work in all situations. There's certainly construction costs and supply challenges that are a little extensive right now that add to risk in exploring those and making some of those programs work, but we do explore them thoroughly with all our developers that we work with.
Thank you, Mr. Seer. Any other questions for Mr. Seer? All right, Mr. Seer, thank you. So I have... I'm going to ask one more time, if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and does anyone here have any questions for Mr. Reed? All right, I am going to require... Oh, sorry. Sorry, okay. Counselor Redwan?
Thank you, Mayor Rudin, through you to Mr. Reed. Just for information, I believe that's in here, the traffic impact study is something that's usually done by the developer, correct?
Yes, your worship, through you to the counselor. It's typically done by the developer. On with this application, we did receive a traffic impact letter that basically looked at the volumes in comparison to the original traffic study that was prepared in 1999. Based on that, we're recommending a condition that the developer undertake a study, and speaking with my colleague, Mr. O'Reilly, really, you know, that scope of work, there's really two main fact... or three main factors in it. One is, you know, the operation of the Technology Drive-Sussex Intersection. Do we need signals? Do we need a turning lane? Do we need a crosswalk? The Sussex Drive, we've had some concerns from the community residents, you know, is there, you know, a realistic expectation that there would be... residents. You know, is there, you know, a realistic expectation that there would be cut-through traffic? Back when the, the Xerox building went in, there was a left-turn restriction placed there to help basically manage traffic going down Sussex Drive. And then the third one is the pedestrian aspects of the development. You know, along Sussex Drive, Technology Drive, you know, what else is required for pedestrian improvements in the area? So those are the three main areas that, you know, we would see that traffic impact study focusing on. And what staff do? Staff work with the developer and their consultants to make sure the city's needs and interests are met in that study.
And just to kind of follow up on that, so you would probably, at that time, I would think, Mr. Reed, you would end up, if there's any sort of traffic calming measures that need to be taken, that's when they would be implemented?
Yes, that would be, and it would come from the study. And that, that's typically something that a traffic impact study looks at. You know, traffic calming in this instance, you know, are there certain geometric design, I don't want to presuppose the study, but are there certain geometric design improvements that could be made to discourage through traffic on Sussex Drive if it's perceived or could be an issue?
Okay, thank you. I'll come back around. I have another one. Counselor Sullivan?
Thanks, Your Worship. Really, just a bit of a shout-out to our planning staff. Counselor Lo and I get to see these presentations multiple times through PAC. And just really to thank them and point out for council and for the city manager, just how good a staff you have. Just appreciate the answers that they have. And after three tonight and three a couple of weeks ago at PAC, they don't get enough love. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan. I will echo that because in my kit, it goes from page 210 to page 309, so there's a significant amount of work there. Appreciate it. Counselor Redmond, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Rudin. Through you to, actually, Commissioner Hamilton. I just had a question that I had asked her earlier. Just wanted to see if she would clarify for the public. So in, some of the concerns were about water runoff. So I'm just wondering if you can speak to what kind of requirements in development of this size is required by law?
Yes, Your Worship. Through you to the counselor. There, there is not a condition that addresses this for the simple reason that that is a requirement of the city's drainage bylaw, that a stormwater management plan be developed by a professional engineer and submitted prior to the building permit. So that is a standard requirement for a development of this scale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'm going to need four motions. And the first one is, first reading by title for municipal plan amendment. Deputy and Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
Second reading by title for plan, municipal plan amendments. Deputy Counselor Lo on the question. All in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
The third, the third motion is first reading by title for zoning bylaw amendment. Counselor Lo and Counselor Harris on the question. All in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
And second reading by title for zoning bylaw amendment. Counselor Redmond and Counselor Lo on the question. All in favor? Contrary-minded? Thank you.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you, common clerks. Congratulations to the Dowd and Hovey team. It's very exciting for you and exciting for us as well. And I know you build a quality project, so can't wait to see it all start rolling out. Thanks for coming tonight. All right, common clerk, next.
Yes, Your Worship. Next item is under Business Matters, and it would be item 12.1 on your agenda. And it's a staff report and presentation called Compliance Program Overview. Commissioner Hamilton will introduce this.
Commissioner Hamilton, over to you, please.
Yes, good evening, Your Worship, members of council. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an orientation and awareness building related to the city's high-profile property-related compliance programs, which play an important role in driving the growth agenda. While this presentation will be focused on the existing state, the current state of our enforcement programs, I would note that staff are continually, continually making improvements to these programs and have done so over the last number of years. This effort is ongoing and will involve further analysis by staff to assess additional areas of improvement for these programs in consultation with the council's growth committee. I would encourage members of council, if you have ideas related to process improvements related to these programs, so to reach out to me directly with your feedback following tonight's presentation. And we will assess this and include it in the follow-up materials to improve the effectiveness of these programs on a go-forward basis. So with that, speaking tonight on behalf of staff will be Chris McKeel, who's our manager of our bylaw compliance programs, and Ben Purington, who's the manager of the vacant and dangerous buildings program. And I will now turn things over to Mr. McKeel to deliver tonight's presentation.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hamilton. Good evening, Your Worship, and members of common council. Today, we're going to give a brief overview of the three key property compliance programs that the city of St. John operates. These programs are the minimum property standards program, the community standards program, and the vacant and dangerous buildings program. Each program plays a pivotal role in, in addressing various life safety and quality of life issues experienced by our citizens. It's important that these issues are addressed as they directly impact the safety, enjoyment, and livability of our neighborhoods. In each program, an enforcement case always begins by staff attempting to achieve voluntary compliance. Voluntary compliance allows for a successful outcome for all parties, as it typically achieves quicker results, is less costly to owners, and allows staff to resolve more, more cases using existing resources. When enforcement action becomes necessary, staff can issue either an order to comply or a notice to comply. The repercussions for not complying with an order or notice varies depending on the applicable bylaw. Penalties include the ability to lay an information in court, receive court orders, pursue fines, and in some cases, the ability to take remedial actions to address the outstanding conditions such as a demolition or a cleanup. The minimum property standards program is designed to ensure that the health, safety, and well-being of residential building occupants is protected through enforcement of a minimum set of established standards. More specifically, the program is critical to addressing health and safety issues in residential dwelling units for a vulnerable sector of the population that can often have trouble voicing their concerns over substandard living conditions. Under the program, staff work closely with property owners and property managers to ensure that a wide, wide range of life safety and quality of life issues are addressed. Some of these items can include missing smoke alarms, unsafe decks or stairs, improper exiting, damaged fire separations, rodent or insect infestation, and water leaking into an apartment. Staff conduct regular inspections to ensure that life safety issues are addressed quickly and that agreed-upon timelines are met. If timelines are not met, staff will issue an order to comply. If the order is not complied with, staff can then lay an information in court and pursue fines ranging from $1,000 to $10,200 and obtain a provincial court order. Currently, there are 180 active cases under the minimum property standards program. On average, the program fully resolves approximately 30 cases annually and has resolved 20 cases year-to-date. The minimum property standards program ensures that all tenants are provided with safe living conditions in a building that is properly maintained. The community standards program focuses on issues that directly impact the aesthetics and enjoyment, enjoyment and pride of neighborhoods. While the community standards program primarily works to address unsightly premises, the program also addresses zoning bylaw infractions. Zoning bylaw infractions commonly involve the unapproved use of property. Some common examples include illegal repair garages, the improper storage of industrial equipment on a residential property, or the use of a recreational vehicle in a residential zone for living or sleeping. The community standards program is a strong enabler of growth and a key driver of a livable city, which is central to attracting and retaining people and investment to our city. When voluntary compliance cannot be achieved for unsightly premises, staff are able to clean up a property through enforcement action. The process begins by staff issuing a notice to comply, which sets clear timelines for when a property must be cleaned up. If the notice is not complied with, common council can authorize staff to clean up a property, and any associated costs will be billed to the property owner. If the bill is left unpaid, the city is reimbursed by the province, and the outstanding amount is added to the property The community standards program achieves high rates of voluntary compliance, frequently resolving in excess of 125 enforcement cases per year, approximately 95% of which are resolved through voluntary compliance. Approximately 110 community standards cases have been resolved year-to-date. Aggressive, strategic targets, a focused and streamlined approach, and a talented and dedicated resource with a background in community policing have been key components to the success of the community standards program. I'll now hand it over to Mr. Purington, who will give an overview of the vacant and dangerous buildings program.
Thank you, Mr. McKeel. Appreciate that.
The city of St. John's Dangerous and Vacant Building Program works to address problematic vacant buildings throughout St. John. These vacant buildings affect the quality of life of our citizens as they can attract criminal activity and negatively impact property value in the surrounding area. Properties are ranked based on hazard to public safety through a prioritizing system that considers safety factors, including whether the building is secured, whether it is structurally unsound, and if it is visibly vacant. The priority of the program is to address public safety concerns, and staff pursue demolition if a vacant building becomes a hazard. However, the program also helps drive growth in our communities by working with property owners to see buildings be repaired and reoccupied. When working on vacant building cases, the goal is always to see a property be repaired and reoccupied, as this is a quicker way to address safety concerns, grow the tax base, and enhance the quality of a neighborhood. So as previously mentioned, staff may pursue enforcement if a building becomes a hazard to public safety. Enforcement action is taken through a notice to comply, which provides timelines for when the building must either be repaired or demolished by. If those timelines are not met, staff can move forward with demolition of the building with common council approval. Typically, that demolition is contracted out through a competitive bidding process, although some demolitions are done by internal staff. Similar to the unsightly cleanup process, the bill is sent to the property owner, and if left unpaid, the province reimburses for the outstanding amount, and that amount is placed on the property taxes. The program currently monitors approximately 145 vacant buildings, the vast majority of which are not currently dangerous. This is down from approximately 220 back in 2018. On average, approximately 70 vacant building cases are resolved per year. Due to the program being impacted by the pandemic, 50 cases were resolved in 2020, or in 2020. In 2021, 41 cases have been resolved year-to-date. As vacant building conditions improved, staff are focusing on facilitating redevelopment with the goal to improve the percentage of resolved cases that are repaired and reoccupied. Currently, approximately 2/3 of resolved cases are solved by being repaired and reoccupied. Some recent improvements to the program include the developer notification list, which allows owners to advertise their vacant building to an email list of local developers. In the four months since the developer notification list has launched, approximately $50,000 in outstanding property taxes and water bills have been recovered as a result of sales through the program. Re-rundevolution incentives are another tool that can facilitate redevelopment by providing financial incentives to make vacant building redevelopment projects more economically viable. And just some final thoughts to conclude on. So the goal of these compliance programs is to improve the quality of life for our citizens by addressing, addressing substandard conditions that exist in the community. For all compliance programs, voluntary compliance is the ideal outcome. Although it may result in some cases taking longer to resolve, it also, it allows staff to achieve a higher number of resolved cases with the same amount of resources. It also benefits property owners as it is less costly and can provide more time to remedy the issues with the property. And finally, it is important that if you see a property bylaw issue that you report it. And you can do so by calling the city of St. John customer service line at 658-4455, or by submitting your complaint by emailing onestop@stjohn.ca. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Mr. McKeel and I are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Purington. So as the commissioner said initially, you have an awareness briefing here. If anyone has any questions on clarification of what has been presented, I guess what will happen is we continue down this road of tweaking these programs through Counselor Killen's team with, yeah, with your growth committee. So everything will head over to your direction from here. So does anyone have any questions for any clarification? I've got a few. Yep. Counselor Killen, you're up first.
Thank you. I just wanted to give some praise to you guys, because one of the first things I ran into was one of these issues when I was elected, and you were super helpful. And so I just wanted to reiterate how important it is to collect data. So to the public, if there's an issue, that, that phone number that was in the last slide, and then onestop@stjohn.ca, we don't know what we don't know. So we really need that information, I think. And as part of the growth committee and chairing that, I realize that we need to hear from the public. So with this new bang-the-tables system, we're getting all that kind of stuff. We look forward to hopefully even more engagement on this, and we can make St. John even better. So thank you for the team of two that does all this amazing work. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Killen. Counselor Ogden?
I'd like to reiterate what Counselor Killen said. I've been involved with cleaning up properties for probably 25 years, and these, these people are just super to work with. One case we had recently, which I didn't think belonged in the city's atmosphere, we ran into a case where a lady's quality of life was, we thought was very terrible. So I had to do some digging and had to go to, I thought it was mental health I had to go to. But today, I was directed to the Department of Justice, that they also have some regulations and laws where you can actually get somebody to go visit somebody who might be having mental illness, or the poverty is creating the mental illness. And I was in the place myself, and it was just abject poverty, just squalor. And I felt so bad that we washed the outside of the house. And so my hats are off to these gentlemen, because we do have some extreme poverty. And I hope when the province decides to deal with the taxation issue, they also have to deal with housing standards, because if people are going to be given tax breaks, we need higher housing standards, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ogden. My apologies, Counselor Harris. I missed you, but you're up now.
That's okay. Thank you, Your Worship. I just got a slew of questions that I just want to throw you. And part of it's because I know there's, Counselor Killen's talking about people not necessarily getting engaged. I get a fair bit of engagement on this topic, but I put my neck out there on a number, a number of ways for it. So I think part of the slew of questions is designed to help people track with the step-by-step, how does this play out? What are the implications? And how, how do they, where do they find themselves in it? So my first question is around this idea of, of dangerous and compliance. Let's take a code violation, for example. One that I'm more familiar with would be on something like, like stairs that get over four feet, and there's, there's no railing on a side, let's say. Person A makes a complaint about that. They call you. Is that something that your department would then send a bylaw or minimum code inspector out for? What would be the next step when a person makes that complaint about, say, a minimum code violation or standard?
Through Your Worship to the council, I'll refer it to Mr. McKeel.
Sure.
Through Your Worship to the councilor. So we would, as soon as we receive a complaint, we would send a, typically complaints are referred to us by the tenant. So typically, we would verify the, the complaint. Two to three days after the complaint is made, we would go to the property, meet with the tenant, and verify that the complaint is valid. Once, once that takes place, we would send a request for entry and begin a minimum standards case on the building. And then any outstanding deficiencies with the building, we would, we would work with the owner to ensure that those issues are addressed. So missing handrail would be, missing guardrail would be one of those issues that would be addressed. addressed.
And is there, I understand that some of this is provincial, but what's the tenant's insulation from a landlord taking retribution against that kind of filing?
Yeah, so that's a good question, and we do have, we do hear concerns from tenants about that. We never release tenant information to the owner, so we're often asked by the owner who made the complaint. And we can receive complaints from other areas as well. Sometimes we receive complaints from Child Protective Services, from fire prevention, other areas as well. So it's not necessarily a tenant, and we often tell the owners that. So, but we never disclose the owner's information, or the tenant, the complainant's information, just to respect their privacy.
Right, okay. And so, okay, perfect. So if somebody can make a complaint, and they can trust that the system's going to protect their identity and not reveal that, how many bylaw officers will we have that are kind of working on this enforcement piece? And out of that, how many of them are doing proactive work, going and finding problems versus reactive, or is it all reactive?
Yeah, so we have, we have three compliance inspectors, and they're not full-time inspectors on bylaw enforcement. They also do some building permit inspections as well, so they're part-time on it. And myself and Mr. Purinton would be full-time on bylaw enforcement. So that would be the number overall, and it's distributed amongst the three different programs.
Thank you. And my last question, if you, if I can, you want to kick me off?
Yeah, do you mind just putting your light back on, and we'll circle back to you. Counselor Stewart?
Just a question for Chris. For the familiarity of ours, myself with timeline, if a notice to comply has been issued for Community Standards, and it's either not completed in time, or if it's ignored, it comes back to council, we give you the authorization to go out and clean that up. What's that timeline, once we give that, okay?
Absolutely. So the timeline that we provide the property owner really depends on the size of the, if it's an unsightly property, depends on the size of the issue and how long it would reasonably take them to clean up the property.
Sure.
So they have, they have a 14-day appeal period from the time that the notice is issued. So that, so the minimum timeframe that we can issue a notice to comply for is 15 days. And a common timeline would be 30 or 60 days that we would provide the owner to clean up their property. And if it's not met by that time, we would undertake a compliance inspection, and then prepare a report to common council recommending that the property be cleaned up. So I would say, in total, it would probably take, from the time that a notice is issued, depending on the timeframe, typically four to five months, I would say, in total. But that's also allowing, that's also allowing voluntary compliance. And if we've been working with the owner ahead of time, we might tighten it up to a 15-day notice, proceed to common council, and then it could be one to two months.
So it could be painstaking, then, right?
It can take a little bit longer.
It doesn't typically happen that way, though. They're usually compliant, as I can tell by your stats.
Well, absolutely. We've been, we've been lucky to be successful and have, in the Community Standards Program especially, 95% of our cases are resolved through voluntary compliance. So that provides a huge advantage in the amount of cases that we can resolve.
Truly. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy?
Thank you, Worship. Chris, I gotta, I gotta tell you that I've been on council for a while, and you guys have come a long way, a long way. You know, having 80% compliance, voluntary compliance, that's good news, because when we first started this effort, I think it was back in 2013 or 2014, it was not good. So hats off to you guys, you're doing a great job. I know that there's barriers in the way, you know? There's certain provincial rules and people that need, you know, we need help from in the province that, you know, we're not there yet, but we're getting there. I am speaking specifically of these buildings that are, they're empty for eight years, and by the time we get to, you know, they're hard to save. But anyway, we're going to work on that, try to get that down to two. And one of the best things, I think, that we've done is this developer notification list of vacant lots and buildings that, you know, could be sold and rehabilitated. And I'm really proud of that program, and I just wanted to make developers aware tonight, because I know you touched on it in your, in your presentation. But how do they get a copy of that list? If I was a developer and I wanted to copy that list, how do I do it?
Absolutely. So they can, they can reach out to onestop@stjohn.ca, and once they send an email there requesting to be, they can request to be added to the developer notification list, so to be notified on vacant, vacant building development opportunities. And they can also request a copy of the vacant building list.
And do you have to be an actual developer, or could you just be a guy that likes fixing up buildings, buying them and fixing them up to get that list?
You could be a developer, or you could be just interested in renovating a property, potentially for your own use. So you don't have to be a developer to receive a copy of the list.
Okay. Thanks very much, guys.
Thank you. Counselor Redwin, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Reddick, through you to Mr. McKeel. Just a couple of questions. So I'm just wondering if there's any bylaws that will protect buildings from being purposely let go? And when I say that, so say, for example, you have a property, maybe it's a heritage property, and maybe the owner applies for demolition, and the city denies the demolition, and then they say, okay, well, we're just going to pull the plug on the power. So are there any bylaws that protect properties from just being neglected purposely?
Yeah, so the Vacant and Dangerous Buildings Program does operate on a priority basis. So if the building is being maintained, looked after, remains secure, likely it would remain lower on the priority list. There's not a lot out there in terms of, once, when a building's lower on the priority list, it could remain vacant for a number of years before, until it does escalate on the priority list, if it's broken into. And other, other issues can escalate it on the list as well, so.
I know there's some cities that have bylaws that you have to have light on, so just food for thought. But I do have one other question. It's a, you know, I don't want it to sound insensitive. I'm just wondering, so say, of course, we have the substandard bylaws, right? But if somebody is a property owner, and it's a dangerous building, but it's not vacant, what is staff able to do, and this might be something provincially, I don't know, but what's staff able to do to ensure that our citizens are living in a house that they're not going to get hurt in?
Yeah. So if it's, if it's a rented apartment building, or if the building is being rented, that's where minimum property standards would have jurisdiction. And we could, we could undertake a minimum property standards enforcement case and ensure that it meets those minimum, that minimum set of criteria, minimum standards, that the building is properly maintained. But if it's owner-occupied, then, then we really don't have any, if the building is occupied, we don't, we really don't have any bylaws that would directly address it. However, we do see in some instances that prior to buildings becoming vacant, they may be, they may deteriorate while they're occupied, and they may be in quite poor condition once they do become vacant and become monitored. And we have seen cases escalate quickly after they've recently become occupied.
So does the province have any sort of legislation that could help somebody there, or is there anything that can, can help the homeowner so that, you know, they're not going through a floor or something, for example?
Yeah. I'm not aware, for single-family homes or owner-occupied homes, I'm not aware of any programs that the, that the province has to offer to prevent further deterioration of homes. Yeah.
Thank you. That's fine.
Counselor Harris, back to you.
Thank you, Worship. One question, then I'll just end with a comment. Staging, it's up on the outside of the house. We don't know if the guys or gals got a permit for that state, or, let's say the staging's not on the sidewalk, because I know if it's on a sidewalk, you need a special permit to put it there. It's around their house. It's been there for a year. We have no clue if this got a permit. Somebody reports that. How, what should they say when they report that to you? Is that a compliance standard? Is that a request to inspect for a permit? What should they say to you if they're thinking, my goodness, the staging's been here for a year, it shows no sign of going anywhere? And also, or is that a problem? Can they just leave that there for another eight years?
Yeah, good question. So I would recommend either emailing onestop@stjohn.ca, just provide the information, and we can, we can go out and investigate and see if there is, if they do have a building permit, or if there are any violations of any bylaws. So you don't need to know of a specific violation. You can, you can pass it along, and we'll send an inspector out to see, to verify if there are any outstanding bylaw violations. You can also call 658-4455 and pass along that information as well.
Great. So, yeah, thank you for that. And I think, just for the public's awareness, this is not done. This is not like Deputy Mayor McKenzie referred to this. And just to reiterate that, this program is by no means done. We really are looking into ways that we can improve it. I know Commissioner Hamilton and Director Poffenroth are very committed, and they obviously have a good team, and you both. But I want the public to know, there's been a lot of complaints, at least to me, that we are trying to find creative ways and solutions to improve, to bring those times down, to get compliance, and to, and maybe introduce new measures to undertake. So, yeah, thank you again for the, for the time tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Purinton, Mr. McKeel, thanks so much. Always appreciate your reports, always comprehensive and very professionally done. You do, are doing a great job, and I know it helps the council, our previous councils put a little bit more money into that, into that initiative. So appreciate you being here tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, I need a receive and file, please. Counselor Hickey and Counselor Stewart. On the question, all in favor? Contrary-minded, motion carried. Thank you. Next item, common clerk.
Next on the agenda, Your Worship, is 12.2, and this is another staff report and presentation, Integrated Customer Service Center project update.
Your Worship and members of common council, I am pleased to introduce Ms. Van Wart, manager of the Integrated Customer Service Center. Ms. Van Wart will present a briefing on the integrated customer service operations and progress on full implementation of the project. Starting in February of 2020, the design and implementation of the project has realized significant accomplishments. While the team is focused on operations, there is significant ongoing effort to implement the remaining phases of the project and continuously improve processes to enhance the customer service experience. Ensuring that all service requests are logged and followed up through the service center will provide the data necessary to measure performance, identify areas for improvement in all service areas, and advance a customer-focused culture among all employees. I will turn it over to Ms. Van Wart for the presentation.
Good evening, Your Worship and members of common council. This evening, I'm pleased to provide a briefing on the city's Integrated Customer Service Center. A brief outline of the presentation. I'll start with a reminder of the vision for the Integrated Customer Service Center, the model design, followed by how to connect with the team, a project status update, including accomplishments and planned work, a statistical overview of how we're doing, providing insight into the operations of the center. Finally, I'll conclude with some key points and any questions for discussion. So this is a reminder of the model design and vision for the Integrated Customer Service Center. Citizens and customers can access city services in three different ways: in person, at the Customer Service Center front desk, located on the ground floor of City Hall, online via the City of St. John website, and over the phone by calling 658-4455. To note, this design and vision will continue to involve with organizational needs and priorities. So if customers are connecting with the Customer Service Center via telephone at 658-4455, they can access services during regular business hours to report any type of municipal issue. It's incredibly important that concerns are logged with the Customer Service Center in any medium, so that we can direct them through the appropriate workflow to the correct department. If their matter is after-hours and of urgent nature, they can connect with our 24/7 team. After-hours urgent requests include reports of flooding, signage issues, traffic light issues, sewer backups, and water quality issues. The same phone number, 658-4455, is utilized both during regular business hours and after To date, we have achieved significant accomplishments in moving this project forward, considering the various challenges and changes the organization has faced in the past year. In addition, a project of this magnitude usually takes a municipality two to three years with a dedicated project team. The following accomplishments are big wins, which include launching the project in February 2020, recommending the model design and technology investment to council in August 2020, with subsequent approval and purchase. In the fall, we progressed with restructuring to create the new department, and we opened our new front desk at City Hall. And finally, we launched our new technology earlier this year, the new phone system in February, followed by the CRM in April. So since launching the new technology in the spring, we have specifically completed the following. Thirty-two service requests have been configured in the CRM system. A few notes on service request configuration. One service request can take anywhere between two hours or two weeks to configure. It depends on the complexity of the request, the number and needs of the departments involved, and workflow management. Configuration includes defining scripting for the customer service team, messaging activities, workflow, and turnaround times in reporting. We're currently focusing on preparing for winter service requests and onestop development service requests. For the remainder of Phase 1 configuration, we have 18 out of 33 service requests in progress and 15 that we haven't started into yet. So far, 70 staff across the organization have been onboarded and trained to use the new system. Six telephone lines have been routed through to 658-4455. This includes finance phone lines for payments, parking phone lines for ticket inquiries, and other departments where service requests have been configured. We've also developed a training manual for the customer experience reps, and implemented standardization to ensure consistency with interactions with the contact center. For ongoing and planned work, the continued service request configuration, FAQs, and information and reports are being worked on. And we have a few improvements to the phone system that we're working through, including a direct dial queue for our high-priority internal customers, such as PSCC. A notification to customers if we're experiencing high call volumes is another example of an improvement we're working on. Other ongoing planned work include the mobile worker application, which can be used by workers in the field to complete work, just simply on their smartphone. Implementation of the online citizen web portal, which will also allow for workflow routing from the website directly into the CRM. Right now, citizens can report issues directly on the website, but staff must manually transfer the information into the system in the background. Defining service level agreements with service areas is another item on our to-do list, which will define what customer service is responsible for versus what service areas deliver. Formalizing and completing supporting policy and procedures will also help to enhance the customer service culture. And finally, once the initial phase of external customer requests are configured in the system, we can then focus on leveraging our existing technology to help internal departments manage their workflow. So our phased technology implementation has allowed us to make improvements to workflows and data management as we progress through the phases and onboard departments. Without this approach, we would not be successful. Now moving into reviewing some of our statistics on our overall performance. This is a dashboard on our call volumes. Our peak day in 2021 was Tuesday, June 8, where we had 363 incoming calls. This was due to a water main break and infrastructure upgrades resulting in citywide dirty water calls. Due to the flexibility of our phone system, we were able to add more customer experience reps from the front desk to support the queue, which resulted in 328 accepted calls and an abandonment rate of 9.6% for that day, which is extremely good. On average, calls with customers last about 2 minutes and 34 seconds, which demonstrates that the majority of calls are for information or payment, essentially a straightforward transaction. that the majority of calls are for information or payment, essentially a straightforward transaction. Municipal 301 centers typically see a trend of 80% information requests and 20% actionable service requests. Our daily average call volume is currently at 166 calls with 50, 150 being accepted due to an abandonment rate. The customer experience reps typically have 73 outgoing calls per day with the team. So considering on average, we have about three people answering the phone line, this is about 75 total for each person, 50 incoming and 25 outgoing. For our abandonment rate, a global metric is between 5 to 8%. Our average is now at 9% with the average time someone abandons a call at 1 minute and 21 seconds. However, typically, the average wait time to speak with a customer experience rep is 44 seconds. This graph shows a visual representation of the number of calls entered, a number of calls accepted in 2021. The red in the graph that you can see, that shows the difference between the accepted calls and the incoming calls, otherwise known as the abandonment rate that we spoke of previously. These calls are abandoned as a customer is waiting in the queue and they may just want to hang up if the wait time is beyond their expectation. On average, about 51% of calls are abandoned within the first minute. Seventy-eight percent, excuse me, calls are abandoned within the first two minutes of waiting in the queue, and 97% of calls are abandoned within the first five minutes of waiting in the queue. It also visually shows the significance of peak call volume days, so you can see the spikes. Thank you. Also a consideration is the seasonality of work we're responsible for, which drives citizen questions and inquiries. After one year of implementation of our integrated approach, we'll be able to see the data and trend accordingly. Hold on a moment, I'm just going to take a bit of water. So the following provides a breakdown of call types. All calls are logged and categorized within the system. However, certain information is only collected as required. For example, if someone calls in to ask the date of the next council meeting, the customer experience rep will not ask for their name and telephone number. They'll simply provide them with the information and end the call. Twenty-eight percent of calls are information or FAQ-based. Twenty-six percent are call transfers, often to other departments. Twenty-three percent are service requests, either in the CRM or NavaLine. Requests logged in the CRM are on average taking about 5.2 business days to be resolved. Some are done sooner and some must be investigated, prioritized, and executed according to work plans. And 20% of our calls are payments. Two percent fall into another category, and 1% are incoming calls from internal departments. Again, it's incredibly important to have concerns logged with the customer service team, to ensure we have a record of the inquiry and that it's placed on a priority list for the appropriate department. This graph shows a visual of the transition between our NavaLine work order system, our ERP system, to our new CRM service request system. We're currently logging requests in two systems, visible with the stacked data in orange for the CRM and blue for NavaLine, depending on the request type. So our initial focus was to configure our most common service requests first and work through the list accordingly. The graph also shows 2020 versus 2021, showing the additional requests that the Integrated Customer Service Center is responsible for intake. The 2020 data includes works, parks, and water requests only. The red line denotes the progress of reduced work order use in NavaLine, so it's trending downwards. So that will eventually get to zero once we have completed all the configuration. To conclude the presentation, three key points to remember about this new department and ongoing project. This is a work in progress. Project phases will continue to be implemented and software capabilities leveraged over the coming months and years. We're currently using numerous systems to serve customers, however, the team is committed to achieving our goal of customer service excellence. Continuous improvement, configuration, information in the system, processes and procedures are continually being updated to better serve citizens. If we discover an issue or a better way to do something, we pivot, we do it. Communication, ongoing communication internally with service areas, externally with citizens, and from common council is extremely important to understand customer needs and resolve issues. The customer service department is not the sole department responsible for customer service. It is our collective responsibility. We also need the cooperation of citizens to connect with us and report issues as required. Finally, we are here to help for council share this information with your constituents and direct questions and service requests to the customer service center that they can be managed for action and resolution. Together with all city staff, customer service is everyone's responsibility, and the recommendation this evening is simply to receive and file. So that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Your Worship and members of council, just before we take questions, Ms. Van Wart was asked this evening to, to explain to you the front end. Allow me to just offer a couple of quick comments about the back end, because the back end is equally important, and that is, what does the staff do with all of this data once we get it? I will tell you that once a week, Ms. Van Wart briefs the senior leadership team on trends, on what sort of service requests are lagging in terms of response times, which ones we're doing well on, et cetera, so that we can take a look at what, why, and is there a requirement to reallocate resources, come up with different processes or procedures, et cetera. That occurs on a weekly basis whereby we take care of any immediate measures that we notice. And then we are instituting a once-a-quarter full performance management review of data, again with the senior leadership team, with a view to make determinations as to what should be adjusted to enhance moving forward. This is why, and Ms. Van Wart mentioned it a couple of times, and I'll mention it again in conclusion, our, our deductions and our allocation of resources is only as good as the data we receive. And therefore, the importance of everything being eventually funneled through the customer service center cannot be overstated. That is how we get the data we need to properly align resources. And with that, Your Worship, happy for Ms. Van Wart to take any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Van Wart. I do have a question for you from Councillor Harris. Surprise.
No, I'm so guilty. Lay it on me. Call me whenever you need to, Your Worship. Thank you. Ms. Van Wart, thank you for that. Your customer service reps that we, you know, our city staff that are working on this, is there much interface with them and the departments? Like, I guess, I guess I'm just wondering, and I'm sure it's been thought of, but I'm just wondering, what does that look like for them to be learning new things about what departments do so that they can deal with it right there on the phone? I mean, I know they can't become experts in the department. They're certainly not going to be able to make a judgment call on some things, but what's that look like? How is that going? I guess is my first question.
So we have a few different approaches that I can comment on. It is extremely difficult for them to keep up with all of the information and all the things that they need to know. One thing that we use in the CRM system through configuring service requests is we discuss with the service area what questions or prompting questions they want to ask the customer to collect that information. We also define if we'd like to provide any turnaround times to the customer, defining that and providing that closing message to the customer. So that's one form of standardization. Over the past year, we've also had numerous training sessions with the service areas and departments that we've onboarded, whether that's when we're transitioning their phone line or whether it was at launch. We try to also bring in the works department. We have a high volume of requests that we have configured in the system, and as you can imagine, a high volume coming in from citizens regarding works items. So seasonally, we like to bring them in to do a session, for example, for their summer season or for their winter season, because operations are changing. So we try to keep the team abreast of information as, as best we can. We have team huddles every morning, first thing, so I speak with the team every morning. So if there's anything urgent or pressing that they need to be aware of, we provide that verbally and follow up with configuring the system later if we need to.
Okay. And, and what is the, what tends to be the, so I'm just thinking, because I, I understand how this, I mean, first, it's, it's getting us councillors off the hook in some ways, because we have a nice line that has a nice system that we can send people to. I guess one of the things I hear from people is that, well, I never heard back from, I'm assuming that can work both, like, they'll say, I, I asked a question, but no one ever got back to me. That can work two ways. I know they can either, you know, drop the line and, or they didn't actually ask a question or whatever. But what is, what's your experience there as far as getting back in touch with customers? Is there something we need to be doing as councillors to help that process or to coach them in, in using the line? I'm just curious.
So we've identified a bit of a continuous improvement item, which I provided an overview in the presentation. When we discover issues that we're encountering with this new integrated approach, we try to come up with solutions to solve it. So a lot of times what we're seeing recently is customers are looking to speak with the subject matter expert on that service request, right? They want to speak with the individual that manages that department or, or that, that request type. And so what we're trying to do right now is build in some automated escalation so that that is tied to the service request and so that it's automated. Right now, it's a bit of a manual process. It's in the form of emails to managers or trying to get in touch with the, the correct operations manager or whether it be director, commissioner. But we are trying to automate that escalation process. So that's what we're seeing a lot of in terms of people calling back to get that status update. Also, in the future, we plan to implement automated messaging, so when somebody submits a request, they can receive an email that will let them know what the expected turnaround time is, because perhaps it needs to be prioritized for, you know, a number of months. Maybe it's a, a compliance complaint, as we saw in the previous presentation, where it takes months to resolve, right? So setting those expectations upfront are also very important.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. God Counselor Redwan.
Thank you, Mayor Rudin, through you too, Ms. Van Wart. Thank you for the presentation, first of all. It was great, as usual. I'd just like to, I'm kind of piggybacking on what Councillor Harris had talked about. Do the customers get a tracking number at all, usually when they call, or?
Through Your Worship to the councillor, all service requests in the system do have a number attached to them. It isn't our practice right now that we would provide that number to them, but a great suggestion is something that perhaps we can implement in the future in, in asking the customer if they would like that service request number or work order number if it's in the NavaLine system, so.
Do you have any idea, like, I really, I think that we're going to be able to really rely on, on the customer service model once everything's in place. Any idea when, you know, they're going to be able to see an email come back to them to tell them what the service request time would be?
So that will depend a bit slightly. We'll probably put a big push on this fall, because we have had some service requests that have been configured in the system since the spring. But it also depends on reviewing the data. So we want to ensure that the service areas are using the system to record that, that pothole was filled two days ago instead of five days. We want the, the data to be accurate. So we're doing a bit of an audit and reviewing how the service areas are using the system, and maybe they need a little bit of enhanced training or communication or, or whatever. So that's something that we're looking at before we go full tilt on automated messaging. We do have it on a few service requests right now. For example, if you call to report a bulky item pickup, which is a very common service request for us, you will receive confirmation email indicating what items you've registered and the tracking number, I think, would be included on that email as well.
That's great. I just have one more quick one, if I can, and this is maybe direct data director Stephanie Blackley Roach. I'm just, I, I think it's great that we're collecting all this data, and I'm just wondering if that's something that we'll end up seeing in council priorities? Just to know where, where are people wanting, like, where are the requests coming from? What are people worried about?
Through You Worship to the councillor, we can certainly work with Ms. Van Wart to get a snapshot of what we've had since we went live, I believe it was in April with the CRM. It'll be, like, when I say snapshot, it's that point in time as we've included all of the service requests that have come in. But I, I did have a big, you know, we chat a lot, and it was, is every call being tracked? So that pie chart that you have of where all the calls are coming in, that's, that's a good snapshot of overall where those are coming in, but definitely, we are planning on bringing a packet out to you tomorrow. I know it'll be before the day of, but that is something that if Rachel's able to get that together fairly quickly, we can include it in as another lens to look through.
Yeah, I was thinking mostly specifically of the service requests, but.
The types, the types of service requests that are hanging through?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Your Worship, if I may, to the councillor, it's a great question. You're going to see more of that when we roll out our performance management framework, which is due to begin its rollout right at the end of the year, because as part of performance management, we need to manage, we need to measure our customer service. So it's through that lens and the dashboards that we provide to you on performance management that you will get a better idea of the nature of the customer service requests, our time to respond to various ones, et cetera, et cetera. So that's work to, work to come.
Thank you. Councilor Norton, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Councillor, Councillor Adwan sort of took exactly where I was going with this. We spend a lot of time talking about bike lanes, for instance, but if customer service isn't getting any requests for bike lanes or any inquiries about bike lanes, for me, the data would say that that probably isn't the, isn't the concern that folks are calling about, might not be bike lanes. With that being said, we may be getting a plethora of calls as it relates to crosswalk painting, or it might be street sweeping, or it might be pothole repair, or it might be another municipal service, or it might be, you know, recreation focus. So I was hoping to what the city manager said, not to pick on bike lanes, but I would be interested to know how many people are calling customer service about inadequate bike lanes, but I bet there's a lot of people calling with the fact, since schools started, that crosswalks are not painted. So hopefully, those customer service requests can somehow make their way into the budgetary process so that we know exactly what those themes are and we can fund those areas of our operation adequately to address those citizen concerns that are coming in. With, with that said, what are the, what are the big themes? When you look at our operation, we can go through a laundry list of services that we provide. Chances are, it's not police, that's going to go to police. It might not be, maybe OneStop is getting all the, all the, all the building requests, but within that domain, what are some of the hotspots that we're looking at? Can you, can you, can you give us an idea of that?
Certainly, through Your Worship to the councillor. So just without data in front of me, I can speak to what our.
From your morning, maybe from your morning huddles, because you do a morning huddle every morning, which would be a best practice, but you also brief these guys once a week as well, so.
Correct, yes. It is a bit difficult right now to run numbers to say the highest number of requests is our most popular, because we've been doing the configuration of service requests on a rolling basis, right? So we started with about, I think it was 16 service requests in April, and as time has gone on, we have configured additional service requests. So if I was to run a number to say what is the most common service request, probably going to be in that first 16 that we configured in the spring, right? So it's going to take a bit of time for the configuration to catch up, to be full circle, so that everything is in the system. The other thing is we have work order requests in NavaLine, separate system, so kind of running those parallel, but difficult also to, to pull numbers on the most frequent requests. That being said, I can.
Yeah, I don't make it an accounting exercise for.
Right.
Don't, don't, like, don't, I know that that's where you want to go, don't. Give me, give me, to speak to the CFO, give me back the envelope numbers, like, hey Greg, this is, this is exactly where it is in our operation. Maybe it's not in fire, but it's in, it's in parks or it's in pedestrian safety, like, just, we, they're not going to print it and it's not precise and it's not an accounting exercise. Give us an, give us an idea. Don't print that.
Can, can you do that for us?
Certainly, yeah, I can speak to that. Certainly, yeah, I can speak to that. So I would say our solid waste requests are fairly frequent.
Solid waste, okay.
So if, if there's a missed pickup, they can report that or a general solid waste inquiry with the solid waste pilot project that was ongoing. We also had a service request for that, that we could collect feedback specifically under that category.
Is there two others? Talk through it.
Also, under that umbrella is the bulky item pickup that I mentioned before. I would just say potholes pretty common, that was in our first grouping.
Sure.
And to round it out, we don't have numbers on the One Stop Development Shop. I'm sure their numbers are very high. We're working on configuring them in the system. Flooding requests have been very popular.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Counselor, if I may, your question is exactly what we have to answer for you on a regular recurring basis through our performance measurement framework, and that's exactly what we will do. We have to answer that very question that you just posed this evening, and it's going to be through constant collection of data that we'll get there, but absolutely.
Thank you, Senator Roger. Thank you, Rachel.
Okay. Counselor Harris, back to you.
Thank you. Ms. Van Wart, would you get a lot of questions from the public about services that the city doesn't offer?
Through your worship to the counselor, certainly. And we have some fairly common inquiries that are coming in that it's not us. So whether that's provincial government, federal government, so in our phone system, we actually have those frequent inquiries configured, so that if someone calls in, we can transfer them right through, whether it's Service New Brunswick or, you know, another federal program or something. Sometimes if they're a very obscure request, we might say, you know, we don't know what that is, but the customer experience rep might do a quick Google search if it's something extremely obscure. But typically, the requests that aren't us are fairly frequent, and so we kind of, we know what they are and we try to forward the customer on appropriately.
And your line also wouldn't be the only line people get, so I'm assuming to Counselor Norton's question about bike lanes, I'm assuming if we asked Director O'Reilly how many hundreds of people have reached out to him about safe cycling in the city, he might have another opinion on the matter. But I'm just curious, is there ways to, like, not all of our staff's emails are available, but is there ways people get around this customer service line right now? Like, is there data we can't capture that it, here, just around that? Because I know if somebody had interacted with his staff at some point in time, they're not necessarily going to call you looking for them, they're just going to email them. So is that feeding back into this profile that we're trying to develop on what's important? Because I, I guess, I didn't look at the customer service line as a citizen engagement line. I more or less understand it to be dealing with the services that we provide. So I'd just be hesitant about some of those comparisons, but I am curious as to how data escapes and what's the plan there.
So if I may, when we get to the performance management framework, one of the inputs will be the data from the customer service center, but there will be other inputs now. The bang the table that we are getting will be an input. And the requests, observations, town halls, stakeholder engagements that we do with all of our various projects. You spoke about bike lanes. Well, sure, Mr. O'Reilly gets lots of input through town halls. We're not going to try to take all of that input and shovel it into the customer service center. So through our performance management framework, we need to consolidate all that and then come to you with a picture. A lot of the examples that have been thrown around, and I recognize they're only examples, but a lot of them are simply operational issues. So if, if Ms. Van Wart tells us that we've had fifteen calls on potholes in the last week and we get that on our Thursday meeting, at an operational level, we ask ourselves, why? Are we in the wrong part of the city doing it? Was the weather the cause, et cetera, et cetera? And we will deal with a lot of that at the operational level. We have, to be honest, no intent of bringing all of that to council. We need to bring to council the themes and where the focus areas are and where the citizen priorities seem to be. And that will be a combination of customer service, bang the table that we're bringing in, town halls and other stakeholder engagements that we do.
I see what you're saying. So you've got multiple streams that are, this is one of those streams leading into this main one you're talking about, not the other way around?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It looks like that's it. Thank you very much. I always enjoy your presentation, because it's, I just see us, I guess, moving along that continuum of getting better and better. I love the name that you used, Customer Experience Reps. I think it should be called, instead of Customer Service, Customer Success. I think, you know, it's very positive to be moving along in that direction, so appreciate all the work that you've put into it. It's, it's great. So I'll ask for a motion to receive and file. Hickey and Killen, on the question? All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Column and clerk, next item.
Your worship, one final item. It would be item fifteen point two on your agenda, and it's Annual General Meeting, Pension Board of Trustees, request to appoint a council member.
Will you up for this one?
Your worship, members of council, we always have had a representative from council at the, that deals with the pension board and at the annual general meeting. Traditionally, it has been the chair of the Finance Committee. What we are recommending for council consideration is that that practice continue, but ensure, in order to ensure flexibility, our recommendation would be that it be the chair of the Finance Committee or his delegate, as he sees fit, so that we do ensure that we have the representation as required in terms of the pension board considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take a motion for that. Deputy and Counselor Hickey, on the question, Counselor Sullivan? Excellent, since we just relegated you to that job. All in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Hickey. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carried.